Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Well, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, to silence your cell phones, meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger, and Carol is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. Next item is a consider a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes from August thirteenth.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, our bills to be paid in the amount of four million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barth.
Today's bills include two hundred and ninety-three thousand for our share of the public library, and three point nine million in motor vehicle fees remitted to the state.
Thank you. Any other comments? The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And next, I'd recommend for your review the reports that are provided by the Minnehaha County Sheriff, the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds, and the Minnehaha County Coroner. Next item is personnel actions. I consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is an abatement recommended for approval and veteran exempt parcel ID twenty-four, four-one-one, two thousand and eighteen property taxes. Chris Lilla, good morning.
Good morning, Chris Lilla, Equalization. Yeah, this is a run-of-the-mill, surviving spouse was finally awarded based on husband permanent and total disability. So again, the award date preceded November first of two thousand and eighteen, but the application was failed to be made by that time. So I am recommending the abatement for approval.
Questions?
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next, notices and requests, there are none. Planning and zoning notices, there are none. Petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on our agenda, this is your opportunity. You can come to the mic, please, if you just introduce yourself and give your name and address, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, I didn't realize you could get to me this quickly, but I'll be very brief, okay? My name is Robert Maybe. I have an office at three hundred North Dakota Avenue, Suite three oh four. I've been in the three hundred building now for, well, my youngest daughter is twenty or thirty-five, I've been there thirty-three years. I just wanted to thank all of you for taking time to serve on the county commission. The current needs of taxpayers who own or lease space in the three hundred building require some additional parking and accommodation. Recent news stories have indicated that a great deal of tax money has been spent on parking structures that may not be needed. There was a recent article in the Argus Leader on July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, that reported forty-four percent, forty-four percent, of the public parking goes unused daily. That's before the five hundred new spaces that come online as part of what would have been the Village on the River Building is finished. So we're going to have a lot of empty spaces in the downtown area. The three hundred building currently needs twenty spaces on the west side of Dakota Avenue to accommodate the current needs of tenants and their customers. The data indicates that more than that space is regularly available. Assuming that the average government employee with twenty-two days of sick leave and annual leave, and each of the six hundred-plus people working in the courthouse and jail and so forth, on average, there are fifty-two empty spaces a day. The data indicates that there might even be more than that available. Apparently, at this point in time, the decision or the authority of parking has been delegated to Carol Muller. She has already informed me that she does not think that the county has any responsibility for providing spaces for anyone but government employees. Allocating parking is a discretionary act and not a ministerial duty. I realize that's getting a little wonky and sliding into the MBA and lawyer part of my head, but I apologize for that. The commission, as representatives of the taxpayers, should make these decisions. I believe that perhaps with more input from the public, we might improve the decisions on allocating funds for parking. However, Mrs. Muller does not want this issue even to appear on the agenda, and does not want additional information or input from the taxpayers at this time. When you decide, when you decide that the taxpayers should be heard, please contact me. Obviously, today is not that time, and I don't want to waste any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak, public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to regular business. In the first item, a business is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as track one, Peterson's addition, northeast quarter and northeast quarter, southeast quarter, section twenty-six, et cetera. David, good morning.
Good morning, David Heinold, County Planning Department. So this is a request for the Minnehaha County Commission to declare this property. It's actually located at two five four zero three, four seventy-seventh Avenue. It's owned by Lane McKennie. And the property itself is actually located about four and a half, or four miles southeast of Baltic. We do have, so Booker Prairie County Park is to the east, about a mile. That's right on the Arrows Road there. And then this property is on a gravel road. It's on a county highway one twenty-two. As you can see, it's outlined in red. It's kind of a triangular piece of property that, there's some other properties located around that. Just a little background on the property and where it's at. In addition, there's also a couple houses to the south as well, that we've dealt with public nuisance cases as well. I've outlined the particular problem area that has continued to progress with unlicensed vehicles, and the same things, they haven't moved since the original complaint in June twentieth, on June twentieth, two thousand and seventeen. It's located just south of the existing accessory building. So that's just a location area there. The property has gotten, just a little bit more background, it's, the property has gotten better over the years since the original complaint. As you can see in the image on the screen, the camper is still there, and the boat is still there. But a lot of the cars that you see in that picture have been removed from the property or licensed as the owner has intended. The, this is just another view of that June twentieth, again from the other side, the north side of the accessory building. This is from the county highway one twenty-two, and then the owner's driveway is located in the foreground there. The three cars that you see that are located, this would be east or west of the accessory building there, those are all still there. This was October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. None of those have license plates. One actually does not have an engine, as you'll see in some of the pictures ahead. And then there's the boat and the camper there. October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, there was some attempts in talking with the owners and the owner's mother as well, and they licensed the camper, so had the two thousand and eighteen tags on there because they had everything current. And then this is skipping forward to May third, two thousand and nineteen, progressing into new calendar year, and the tags have not been put on as of this date, May third, in this image. Wish I had a zoomed-in picture, but there's a green tag on the camper, and the boat hasn't changed since the original complaint. This is looking at the three cars there. Again, you can see one that doesn't have a rear hood there, and then there's a Trans Am there to the left of that. I've detailed some of that out in the memo that I've provided. And as you can see, kind of off to the left of the camper, that car, it doesn't have an engine. That's the one without the hood on the back. And, and then this is July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. This was just before I mailed the certified mail notice to the property owner for the public hearing. Since that time, in two thousand and eighteen, since I've had discussions with the owner, I've had a few talks with them, and I've sent out three letters since that time over the year, and I've not seen anything progress over that time period, with the vehicles remaining in the same location. Staff finds that the complaint, the number of complaints that we've received have addressed the same issues over time. In addition, we actually received a complaint on, back in April of two thousand and eighteen, that addressed the same complaint. The cars haven't moved, and there's these same three cars there, and the boat and the camper. So staff finds that something should be done to address this, and this is the best remedy to order and abate the property's public nuisance, in accordance with South Dakota codified law. So staff are requesting the Minnehaha County Commission to declare the property a public nuisance and enact SDCO twenty-one dash ten dash six. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for David?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
David, when he said everybody else is doing this, did he name names and give you the addresses? And, you know, how often have we seen it where people say, well, I might have this, but look, that's worse, or something, and tattle on each other?
Yes, the property owner has mentioned that, he hasn't named names, but he's just basically asked why is he being singled out, and we address things on a complaint basis, and once we receive a complaint, then we go out and inspect it and go through the process.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Does he not, I mean, there's a huge building there, so there's not room to move things inside, or doesn't he, isn't he a mechanic or something, that he could move these to his business? That's not your problem, but I'm just wondering why they haven't moved because he's got a building there, and he's also got, I think he's a mechanic.
Yeah, in the, in the letters and the notes that I have provided to the commission, there's obviously other space, so I mean, there's, I think there's potential for other areas, but the, not knowing what's inside the building, it's hard to tell.
Commissioner Karski?
Two questions. What's a zoned?
It's zone A-one agriculture.
Okay.
District.
Is anybody living in the farm, in the home that's out there? Can you tell?
There, there have been a number of cars at the property, and they do have fires on occasion, as we've received in the complaints, because a lot of the complaints are based on that.
Fires aren't prohibited, I mean, you can have a yard fire, okay, okay.
Commissioner Heiburger.
If it's A-one agricultural, is, is it restricted by the amount of acres in that plot? Because I thought on A-one agricultural, there was a little bit difference on the amount of machinery you can have on your property.
No, that, so in A-one agricultural district, there is no specification on how many vehicles you can have on the property. That's only pertaining to the number of recreational vehicles, so boats and campers and the like. You have it up to three.
Okay, so do those, that's, so do they not qualify, then?
The boats and campers, they have to be licensed, so they have to have the current tags on them, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
So David, you talked to them, they're, they're not here today, though.
Sent the, yeah, sent the notice out by certified mail on July thirty-first. It was picked up on August fourteenth. There was an attempt made on August first to deliver it, and it was sent to Baltic.
I can, over the years, when we get these things, it seems like they drag on for years and years. And I know of one in Carson that we finally cleaned up a little bit, and it's currently back to its deplorable condition. And I remember being in court with Judge Long chewing that homeowner's whatever, saying he didn't want to see him back again. But I think sometimes there are issues with mental health and stuff that preclude contending with the messes that we have. Did, did the, did the property owner seem upset about this?
No, I don't think, the property owner didn't seem, seem upset. I think the owner, I think in speaking with the owner's mother, had mentioned that specifically in regards to the three cars, she had asked about the fine for the three cars. And they actually, I think, acknowledged the fact that I think it's, it's an issue, and they want to take care of it. But nothing has been done over the year.
Commissioner Heiburger.
So what would be the plan of action if we declared it a nuisance? Would you get a tow truck to get in there and haul the cars out?
The cars would have to be removed by tow truck, yes.
And so what would it be, the three cars and the boat and the camper would all be removed?
Everything. We'd have to make an inspection just to make sure, because there's some weeds in the picture of the camper, just to make sure that they have the current tags, if they have them in the house, then we would double-check that, but.
You could check with the auditor, or the treasurer's office, too, maybe, to find out if anything's licensed. And then you would just, so they would get notice that she would be coming to their property to remove their vehicles?
Correct.
Commissioner Karski.
So this could all be avoided just by putting current tags on these vehicles?
Yes.
And nothing would change?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Just a second, I think there's some follow-up here.
You're not going to be able to get tags on the vehicles that don't have engines in them. I mean, the boat and the camper, yes, but the other junk vehicles, I don't see how you're going to get tags for those, so maybe, but.
Did you have a follow-up? Commissioner Barth?
You know, there's obviously a hazard there to the neighbors having skunks and raccoons and other critters living in these things, you know, just like tires with mosquitoes, et cetera. And I'm saddened that the property owner hasn't chosen to come in to discuss this with us. And so I, I plan to support this action, and it might stimulate a response from the property owner.
Any further questions for David? Okay, so this is a public hearing, I just want to make sure it's the property owner is present, they may speak. Okay, is there anyone opposed who would like to speak about this issue? It looks like there is no one else who would like to speak, so.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to declare the property legally described as, and I'm not going to read the legal description, as a public nuisance and enact SDCL twenty-one dash ten dash six.
For a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Commissioner Karski?
I fully understand, you know, the angst to the neighbors when you have a junkyard, a salvage yard, I mean, just, you know, it's a mess, and I get that. And it's pretty easy to bring it into compliance, just put license on vehicles that probably don't even have motors and make them work. I am torn about supporting the cleanup, because this will probably end up costing this person hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars in tow bills and so on and so forth. I sure wish they would have been here to defend themselves, or at least explain their action that they're going to take on it. And though torn by the private property rights, I think I, I will support the action to clean this up.
Commissioner Heiburger.
We're down to the vote and have decided yet, because I'm kind of the same with Dean, and the other thing is, it's a few vehicles. It's not anywhere near the messes that we've come, had in the past, not even close. And I realize this is our ordinance, and that's the way I struggle with this. He's got them all lined up, and overall, it's mowed in that area. It's not like this is overgrown like some of the ones that we have dealt with in the past. I agree, it's, you know, it's not in compliance. I'm just really, I'm torn with the whole thing, because he is mowing that whole area, is maybe not using a weed eater around his vehicles, but, I don't know. There's, I can tell you what, I live in the country, there's lots of places out there, they've got vehicles sitting on their property, but nobody's complaining about them. And so I, I've seen a lot worse messes than this, but we're not complaining about them, they're my neighbors. So it's, it's, it's hard when you've got somebody who's upset about it and wants it removed, and it's our ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Of course, I'm interested in what you might have to say, Madam Chair, but I think that this could be just a wake-up call, and hopefully this person would come in. I don't believe we're going to go in later this afternoon and, you know, drag out and bulldoze the whole area. I think that there's time for this property owner to come in and, and talk about their plan to bring it into better condition. And I know that there are many places, as Commissioner Heiburger said, that are, are like this, and this is not the worst one we've had to contend with. I'm thinking about Carson again. But I think we need to send a message that this needs to be done, and we should all try to get along with our neighbors before they turn us in.
Question?
Commissioner Karski.
And this might be for legal counsel. If this pass, if this passes as approved, when would it be effective? Is there a three-week or twenty-one-day, or is it effect, when can, when can action be taken? What's the soonest?
Madam Chair? Yes. I think action could be, it would be effective immediately.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be published and noticed and that type of thing, like other?
No, and I think that as Mr. Heinold has articulated, the, the, I think there had been some progress about previous items being removed, but, excuse me, as Commissioner Barth referenced, the tow truck probably isn't on the way today, but there, there would be probably some time for Mr. Heinold to make arrangements, but of course, the property owner wouldn't want to rely on that. So it would be immediate, and I think that, I guess that would be the leverage that you would be using, Commissioner.
So could we, if I may?
Yes.
Could we amend the motion that action would be taken on a certain date? Would that be permissible? Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I think Dean has a good idea there. I, I would say, though, that maybe Planning Department could report back to us prior to any action, as to what steps might be taken. I mean, maybe you just call Nordstrom's, they come and crush them and haul it away, but, you know, they could get back to us next week or the week after. I think we've had that in the past where we've had to hire contractors, you know, removing seventy-five cars, most of whom had trees growing through the engine compartment. So I think perhaps an amendment to have the Planning Department respond with the plan before any action is taken.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I would suggest no action taken until after the first of September. That gives them two weeks, or a week and a half, and then the commission could, then they could report back. Because even two weeks is going to take David that long to come up with?
A contractor.
Contractor, anyway, and then it gives them a date and say that no action will be taken until after the first of September? I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas, too.
A question.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so is your thought that we maybe pass this today and no action taken until after September?
Yeah, until a certain date in September.
September third.
Yeah, after Labor Day weekend. Pick a date, and it doesn't mean that they have to come the next day, but that it won't, action will not happen until after the date, and then you don't know what day they're going to show up.
It would be much nicer to have the property owner here to discuss it with them.
September third, I believe is a Wednesday, correct? Anybody know?
It's a Tuesday.
Third is a Tuesday.
Third, okay, so September fourth, so the September third meeting, either we'll know or action can be taken to begin on September fourth.
So the, if, are we going to amend the motion, or will we just understand that it's September third?
You should amend the motion.
I'd, I'd prefer a substitute motion, if we could.
I would make a substitute motion, Madam Chair, to take no action on this property until after September?
Fourth.
Fourth.
That the, that the Planning Department is taking no action.
Right.
So at this point, you do not want to declare the property a nuisance?
No, we can, but the Planning Department will not take any action until after September fourth, and to notify the person that...
I, I think that's, that's correct. So how should we phrase the motion, then? Since I made a motion, Dean seconded for conversation, I'm, I'll withdraw the motion if Dean...
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so.
Make them up, go ahead.
Our new motion is to declare this property a nuisance and direct the Planning Department to take no action until after September third. Number four.
I'd second that.
Just a second, why? Why can't we do what we're doing?
Well, you can, if you want to do it that way, that's fine.
Okay, I mean, we don't want to defer and then have a whole new hearing. We want to declare it a nuisance.
Yep, we are declaring it a nuisance.
And just declare, and defer the, instruct the Planning Commission to give them a little time. Okay, so we have a motion, and do we have a second? All right, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, that was good discussion. Okay, so that takes us to item eleven, which is to consider a motion to support an application for installation of a self-service terminal for vehicle registration renewal from the South Dakota Department of Revenue, Division of Motor Vehicles. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a letter that we have drafted to have the board chair sign to the state, requesting that a self-service terminal for motor vehicle registration renewal be installed on the first floor of the administrative building. This has been in interest of yours for quite some time now, and our office has reached out and looked at the options that are out there. IT and facilities both are very comfortable with bringing that in. The only thing that we need to ask for a waiver on is that we would not be twenty-four-seven. And you'll note that that's in the letter, that we are able to provide the service of between seven thirty and five PM. We meet all the things for power and internet and all those types of things, and it'll be at a comfortable temperature. We have cameras on it downstairs, so we're able to go through and do that. There are a handful of the kiosks around the state that are not twenty-four-seven, so, and the state is aware that this would be coming in that way as an application.
Commissioner Barth.
Carol, why cut it off at five o'clock? I mean, what, if there are three or four people that still are anxious to renew their tags?
They would still be inside. They just, we wouldn't be able to have additional people come inside. Yeah.
Commissioner Heiburger?
So this is an idea that originated out of our office, and just watching things that go on downstairs at times, those lines get extremely long, and... And the Treasurer's Office sometimes has to dedicate a two or three windows specifically for tag renewal. When you look at the amount of money that it costs to put three people at windows to just do tag renewal, when we could do it with a small Kahuna, financially, in the small Kahuna doesn't cost us any money.
Correct.
And people, if you force people to take a different avenue, they say, you're going to use the kiosk now instead of have a face-to-face, they will do it. And this, this only makes economic sense. It doesn't make any sense for us to have three people at the windows doing tag renewals when we can have a machine that can do the exact same thing and speed the process up. And also speed the process up, I mean, it's one of the Treasurer's goals, is to have shorter lines. This would have much better, shorter lines and to do the business that really needs to be done with the Treasurer's Office.
Commissioner Karski.
I don't think a lot of people are aware of where the self-service terminals are around the town. And as much as I hear people complain about self-checkouts at IV and Walmart, I still see a lot of people using them. And I think people will use this if it's here. They come here because this is where you get your license tags. Oh, there's a machine, I can go do it there. I will get in line and do that. I think it's just going to happen. And it will relieve some of that line and that burden of the people going to the checkout.
Commissioner Barth.
I just want to clarify for the tens of thousands watching this broadcast that a small Kahuna isn't what we call this machine.
We don't have room for the big Kahuna, so we can only get the small Kahuna. But it is, it allows you to get your tags. There's not a cash option. You can't get cash right there. But you can easily get that. And if you've, if you've gotten your tags through these machines, it's really for even those who are not first-generation technology people, it, they're very easy to use. So I think it is a great option. I mean, I would note that Carol did notify the Treasurer's Office, that this was specifically notified the Treasurer's Office, that we're going to be discussing this today. Clearly was on the agenda and nobody from the Treasurer's Office is here to speak about this today, I know, so.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign a application for installation of the terminal for vehicle registration. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Carol gets to stay up because the next item is to consider a motion to approve several related jail expansion projects. So, Carol.
Thank you, yes. Everybody, I think, knows that we're in the middle of a jail expansion project. And one of the things that was on our wish list from the very beginning, we didn't know if we were going to be able financially to make this all work, was to do an expansion of our security system. Currently, the way it has been designed is that there'd be one security system within the existing jail and one within the new jail. Finances are allowing us to go through and put it all on one system. And that's exciting for us to go through and do. You have before you three motions today. One is to approve the security upgrade for the jail expansion project in the amount of $1,306,209. The second one is to authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with Accurate Controls for the amount of $1,167,463. And then authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with SCI Services, who's the consultant on this, for the amount of $20,000. So those are the three that we're requesting. How we're able to make this work financially is, the wonderful part of this is that the contractor had set aside dollars for tariff protections when we started this. And those dollars have now been freed up for us to be able to contribute to this. The project is on time and on budget. Joining us today is Dick Strasberg, who serves as our Owners Rep from Tegra. And this is, this is the biggest change that you have before you, that you'll have before you at all with a jail project. So we would entertain any questions that you happen to have and would say if Dick has any comments also.
Good morning. Dick Strasberg with the Tegra Group out of Minneapolis. So I think the thing we're fortunate on this project is it's gone well. I've been in it for, business for 35 years. And projects seem to kind of take on a life of their own. They either, they start having, you know, lots of challenges all along the way or they just seem to go pretty well. This one has gone well. And that's why there's some extra dollars available here to put the system in. It was originally bid as an alternate and through J.E. Dunn. And then we started working through the logistics of putting in the system into the existing jail, which means we won't be doing this until after the expansion project is, is close to completion. So we won't even start on it. And then it's a phased project after that. So instead of having J.E. Dunn out here supervising the installation of the system, we recommend doing it direct with the county. It does save some dollars on that from a management perspective. But we've got the staff internal at the jail with the facilities staff to handle internally. And we think that makes a lot of sense. So any questions? Happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? I would note this has been an alternate. We've been working on this for a long time. The existing system that we have in our current jail is not going to be supported for a long time. And, and so we are going to have to do this anyway. And it's just a great opportunity to utilize dollars that are available through contingency money and, and do it now and do it on our own without the, doing an official change order. We're just taking money back so that we can oversee it and handle that. It's going to work out well to be able to utilize the new space to phase prisoners into, flex them into new space so that that space is available to do that security upgrade and move prisoners around that way. So I, I think it's, it's a great win for the county personally.
I think along those lines, it's important to note that this was competitively bid with the original project. So I think we've got a, we've got the advantage of really, we bid this with the exist, with the new upgrade along with this as an alternate. So I think we've got a very competitive price on it. It'd be hard to do in the future.
Commissioner Heiburger.
And just to thank you to the team and everyone who's been working on this jail project because it was because of their diligence, Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Bendica and Tegra and the law enforcement side, everyone that's been working on this. It's been their diligence to make sure that this did come out. And it's, thank you for all the hard work you guys have done. Lot of hours.
If I may? You know, just to explain it a little further, we, we could have had two different security systems within the building as it's being expanded. And the one was, was going out of date and was no longer going to be supported. And the interface between them would have been difficult. Security, obviously, in everything is so very important. And to have a unified system with the latest technology is going to be the best solution for all of us. And to follow on what Commissioner Heiburger said, I have to give credit to our tireless chairperson who has been through thick and thin on this even while I'm dozing off in the corner.
It is clearly a team effort and we've had a great team. And we, a lot of, it's been a good group to work with, so. All right, any other discussion? If not, we've got three separate motions we need to do here. So I entertain a motion to approve the security upgrade for the jail expansion project in the amount of $1,306,209.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve, to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Accurate Controls in the amount of $1,167,463.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And finally is to authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with SCI Services, Inc. for the amount of $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all very much. All right, that takes us to our liaison reports. Liaison reports?
Madam Chair, I would just like to point out that next week we're going to be looking at expanding the joint jurisdiction around the city of Hartford. And it's a pretty significant thing and we'll obviously discuss it further next week. But working in planning and zoning, it's often a bit difficult with getting a quorum of these other organizations to the meetings. You know, with Del Rapids and Sioux Falls, we've had some issues. And there's also the issue that's cropped up a couple of times where people, let's say, in the rural area, lose some of the control over their property based on people they don't get to vote for, like in the city. They don't get to vote for people in the city, but yet the city has got some say about what goes on, on the edge of the city, outside of their municipal boundaries. And it's, it's a complicated issue and certainly one that we've worked with for, for many years. The, there could be other communities that want the same power, the same treatment. And honestly, you know, we go to our monthly meeting and it's a joint with the city of Del Rapids, then we have joint with the city of Sioux Falls, then we have Board of Adjustment, then we have Minnehaw County Planning and Zoning. So if we add Crooks, Colton, Valley Springs, et cetera, I mean, I'll be at 14 meetings without getting off my rear end. In any case, our Planning Director is here and I'd like to invite him up in case he has some additional comments, which I so flippantly blew past. But it's, it's going to be a bit of a chore going forward. And the city of Hartford is excited to, to get in on this and we'll see.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I just wanted to chime in. This, we did have a public hearing at our June meeting of the Planning Commission. And that was a joint meeting with the city of Hartford's Planning Commission. And they, and the reason it's coming to you in August was because it, that was the timeframe that worked best for Hartford. So we have been working with the city of Hartford. Hartford has been publishing the hearing notices. And I have a copy of all that information because we'll need to keep a record of, of all of the hearing notices. So that's why you haven't really seen a hearing notice. Only one entity has, has been required to do the hearing notices. And because this request is really coming from Hartford, I've asked them to prepare the hearing notices and bear the cost for that. I will have a memo for you. I, I'm going to be outlining some of my thoughts and issues that I want to make sure that we bring forth, that we discuss, like legal representation at these meetings on the behalf of the, of the city, quorum issues, how we will go about implementing this. Because if, if you do decide to proceed ahead with joint jurisdiction, it, it isn't magically going to appear. We're going to have to prepare zoning ordinance, a joint zoning ordinance for that entire area. I envision having at least one or two public input meetings for all of those people that are going to be impacted to come. And that will be, I, I will make sure that they are aware of it in several methods, including public hearings in the paper, but direct mailing to them. So they know this is important and that they come. And well, it'll take time to make the arrangements, to find a location and work with the city and CCOG. I mean, there's going to be a lot of players in this to get the, if, if it moves forward, it, it will take some time. And I'll have a memo ready for you and, but Jeff's correct, this is going to be coming to you next, next meeting. And we have, you know, a lot of other items that are going to be on that agenda, too, next Tuesday. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Heiburger. I'm just wondering how, how big, a half a mile, three quarters of a mile? What are they thinking?
Well, I have, um.
Couple blocks?
You know, it, it varies from basically one mile, basically right up to the edge of the city limits. I mean, so it, it, it's not a three-mile jurisdiction. A lot of it's half to one mile, I would say, generally, one half to one mile. They, I will tell you, about two years ago, they implemented a plating jurisdiction. And this is identical to their plating jurisdiction that they, that they have already implemented. And actually, if you look on the map that's on the wall, you can see their existing plated jurisdiction. It is going to follow that plating jurisdiction that sort of surrounds, you can sort of see it circling around Hartford on the map.
Commissioner Karski.
Been involved in these since 2011 and good part with the city. And when I was on the city, I kind of appreciated it from the city's perspective. But now, sitting in this chair, looking at it and I'm seeing that decisions are being made for people that they have no ability to elect or control. And that just doesn't seem fair to me. And I have a, I have heartburn with that. Because the city can tell somebody who lives in the county and they're not elected by them what they can and can't do. It just causes me an issue. I mean, if it was an advisory vote, you know, the city says, you know, we don't want it, but it's still up to us. I, it would settle with me a little bit better. I don't know if that's possible to construe that, that way.
No.
Okay.
It's the way, the way state law is written, there's, there's no in-between. It's, they have joint zoning control, joint being the, the key phrase there, and/or nothing.
Yeah. And I, and you've seen it and I've seen it, where the county approved it and the city said no. And I felt bad because the people that were shot down had no elected people representing them.
It, it sometimes allows me to, or requires me, I guess, to explain to those people that are being impacted on how the system works. And I've seen firsthand, there's been some frustration.
Any further comments or questions? I'm just going to clarify, so we, this is set for the next week and for an action?
A public hearing.
Public hearing.
And then you can decide what kind of action you want to take at that public hearing. We will have, if you decide to proceed forward, there is a resolution. And I've been working with the state's attorney. And there will be a resolution that both the city will adopt and a resolution that the county will adopt. And that will basically agree to, to enter into the process and to move forward. And then as part of that, then we would eventually have, we would agree upon the boundaries and we would agree upon the fact that there would have to be approval of a joint zoning ordinance. And then, once that's implemented, and, and, and I apologize, I'm, 33 years, I've never actually ever created a joint jurisdiction. I've always worked where they have always been in place. So it's going to be, it's been a learning experience for me as well. But I, I suppose that, you know, once you get that zoning ordinance done and it's adopted, there's an official date that it becomes effective and then, and then you start your joint, your joint zoning control.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a short one. Last week I was gone. I was in Chamberlain for the Oversight Committee for Criminal Justice and Mental Illness. It's the Oversight Committee that keeps track of what's going on with House Bill 1183, which was passed, I think, in '17. And there'll be coming a, annual report will be out probably in the next month or so. And will give you a better idea of what's going on with, with the oversight. We did spend a lot of time talking about competency evaluations and the number of people that are still awaiting competency evaluations in that committee meeting. And then after that, we went on to have the Summit for Improving Criminal Justice Response for Those with Mental Illness, which was a day and a half, or about, yeah, about a day and a half conference on that subject. And looked at different gaps in law enforcement and challenges that they have, mental health resources and challenges at court hearings, decisions, and what tools that they have. And also then what with the community reentry from jail. We heard speakers or direction about it. Then we mostly, most of our time was spent in breakout sessions with people from Minnehaw County. We had a large delegation of people from different departments there, working on criminal justice. And we came up with several different targeted ideas to work on. And I'd say probably the top one again was, how do we deal with competency evaluations when the state has difficulty getting them done because of staffing down there? And so we do have some focus of different directions that we'll be moving forward with because of those conversations, so.
Anything else? Any questions? I would note that last Thursday, a group of us, not the official entire HAB board, but a group of city and county folks met with Augustana and heard the full report that they did on, at the request of the Homeless Advisory Board and is approved by the city and the county. It's great information. It was really a good meeting. We are going to meet with the entire HAB board and go over that material. There's been a lot of change in personnel, both in the city staff and, and some on the HAB board. And so after that meeting, we will bring forward a report on that to a joint meeting of the city and the county. So I think that's something to look forward to. All right, anything else? If not, is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to mention two items. I'd like to mention two items. One is, I think that our, we need to develop a social media policy. I know that Brandon recently, for example, had fake news posted on the web about the radioactive elements in their drinking water, where the, the report was falsified and printed, causing, you know, obviously concern. Then, just this last few days, we had some folks in that were recording people doing their personal transactions, both at the Treasurer's Office and in Human Services. And I, I think we need to have a plan on how we respond to these things, and I would ask that maybe our department heads come up with an, an idea. Clearly, our citizens shouldn't be, have their personal stuff put, posted on the web to include their image. I, I just think we need to do something with that. And I guess if I might go on, I do have a second item, which is to say that despite what persons in the community might think, we do not have too much parking. We don't have parking that we can give away. I mean, park at the fairgrounds. We do have some spots there. But I, I, I want to speak in support of Carol Muller here, who correctly tried to dissuade people who, for their personal convenience, wanted to bump working people and citizens who report to this building from parking across the street here. So Carol, you got my support?
And my, I think all of our support. I would note that, I know that Carol invited that speaker to come and speak during public input, which I think was the appropriate way to handle that issue. And I would also note that the county is not responsible for building any parking garages downtown. And so we, we don't have anything, and we have had to acquire several pieces of land in the last few years to address parking issues here, so. But-
If I may.
Commissioner Karski?
To Commissioner Barth's comments on social media, I know our highway department has a very active social media presence, and never thought much about a policy, and sometimes you don't want to just make rules to make rules, but at the same point, you have some valid, valid points. And I don't know if that would come, you know, or how that would originate, or how it would, would look, but I, I see merit in you bringing that up. And I know we also have, and the second point, numbered every one of our parking spots. We can tell you exactly how many parking spots we have and, and when we're short, and so on and so forth. So, yeah, we, it is a hot commodity for us, very much so.
And we did figure in employees' vacations and absences and trying to figure out exactly how many spots we needed, so.
I would say one more thing. I personally am parked across the street today, on the other side of Minnesota Avenue, and I frequently plug the meter because it's, it's more convenient.
All right. Anyone else? Any old business? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thanks, everyone, for coming.